Everyone else for being here today. I'm really excited to be presenting this important piece of legislation. Shortly after I introduced it a couple of weeks ago, I was at the Green Primary School teaching junior achievement to a first grader class. I believe there was someone familiar to you in that class. One of the exercises we went through was determining what was a need versus a want. I held up a picture of a baseball and the kids would raise a card that said "Want." I showed a picture of a house and the kids would raise a card that said "Need." The JAA curriculum asked me to hold off on showing the last card until the end of the section. It was a picture of a cap and gown and a diploma. When I put up that card, every first grader held high the card that read "Need." The younger generation gets the importance of a college education even as young as seven. Yet, for too many kids, they will be hearing things that will steer them clear of their first grade dreams. College isn't for you, we can't afford it, things like that. Well, I hope the Great Scholarship will allow many Green students to realize that dream they so eagerly expressed in the first grade, at least in my class I saw. Because if they do, our community and our economy will thrive. More than anything, this is an economic development measure. The evidence is overwhelming that a highly skilled and educated workforce drives up wages and attracts new business and employers. Yet, states like Ohio are backing away from this key economic development tool. As you can see, Ohio is particularly poor at ensuring a highly skilled educated workforce. We're now 45th of 50 states on college affordability. About 10 years ago, we provided two need-based grants for $224 million in aid. Now, it's just one grant, the Ohio College of Opportunity Grant, and it's $100 million. And as you can see, the current budget that's working its way through the State House is not exactly helping matters. And as you look, see over at the map on the right, in the region, Ohio is lagging severely for need-based scholarships, need-based grant funding per pupil. Local communities around the country have started picking up where states have fallen behind. And employers are noticing those communities that take the initiative to develop the highly skilled and educated workforce they seek. You can read these quotes, I'm not going to bore you with death by PowerPoint here, but this is from John Reese, who's a Director of Research at Avalanche Consulting, who one of his things is relocation of businesses. And in fact, business leaders are pushing for these initiatives nationwide. Pew report from January, from last January, four-year, showed that a four-year college degree helped protect young people from unemployment during the economic downturn. Georgetown University's study found that more than half of the jobs created during the economic recovery had been filled by workers with a bachelor's or higher. Another report from the University of Texas found that workforce development programs specifically produce widespread benefits for employers and society as a whole, likely leading to sustained increases in productivity and economic growth. And there's the source, Business Forward, which is a pro-business research nonprofit. We would be unique in Ohio, but not the country, in developing locally-based initiatives to drive up the skill and education levels of our workforce. As you can see, many communities around the country have done this. And in as many communities as there are, there have been variations on this theme. It's not a lot, it's a much, what I'm proposing is a much scaled-down version of what the LeBron James Family Foundation is doing for Akron kids. And for those of you who want to find out about that, go to that website. LeBron is doing, as amazing as he is on the court, he's doing even more amazing stuff off it. Tulsa and Boston, on opposite ends of the political spectrum, are also getting into the act. Tulsa provides a publicly funded, full tuition at Tulsa Community College for kids with 2.0 GPAs or higher. In Boston, in the People's Republic of Taxachusetts, they provide taxpayer-funded administration, and it's administered through the mayor's office of workforce development, provides full tuition at Roxbury or Bunker Hill Community Colleges, and the GPAs 2.2 or higher. It's for Boston High grads. And while we may not, we may be the first around here, we likely won't be the last. We can either lead on this issue or we can follow. Current economic development primary tools involve removing money from school districts and kids through TIFs and abatements. That's not our fault, that's just kind of the way it's been. We give property tax abatements, and we give them, and in order to do that, we have to cut deals with the schools, and it becomes a kind of a mess. The nice thing about the Great Scholarship is it would instead invest in kids and families, not the school district. The school district would not receive a single penny from this. It would be directly to kids or the colleges they attend, and it would make Green more attractive for business. And so, why do we do, why am I proposing first generation? First-generation investment is the most efficient use of our economic development dollar because it ensures that students who are least likely to start college and most likely to not finish will have a better chance of doing both, thus creating the most potential payoff for the buck. Cost is a primary reason that first-generation kids don't finish or don't start. Over the course of the Great Scholarship, the city of Green would be providing a little more than one year's tuition at Kent or University of Akron. And the money would make a huge difference for our students. First-generation students work sometimes three jobs to pay for school. My wife, a first-generation college student, worked three jobs. My mom, a first-generation college student herself, also worked. I see these kids all the time when I teach freshman composition at the University of Akron. They are the hardest workers in my class, but they struggle managing the time, finances, and organization required to meet all their obligations, especially at age 18. I'm in awe of all they can do, given these challenges. I doubt few of us could do the same. I know I would have had trouble at their age. And here's just one example of a typical first-generation student. She moved home, she works at a small retail store in the town where she lives, and also works at the Family Theater every weekend, and she serves as a peer tutor, earning minimum wage. That's a very typical story of a first-generation college student. And the other benefit is, first-generation college students tend to settle around where they live. So there's a much greater likelihood of them returning to the community. And lest you think that we have, our percentage of folks with bachelor's degrees or higher is right in the middle of the pack for some accounting. We're right in the, we're right around where Northfield Center and Monroe Falls are. As you can see, Hudson and Bath, 60, 70 percent of their residents have a bachelor's or higher. And as you can see, the wealth of the community very much tracks with that percentage. So what is this program? Well, it would provide $2,500 scholarships to first-generation college students. Students have to live in Green, they have to attend Green local schools for at least two years, they have to have graduated from Green High, they have to carry a CUM 2.5 in high school, and they receive the $2,500 for each of their years in college, whether that's a two- or four-year institution, including technical colleges like Stark State. And they have to maintain consecutive enrollment in that college and 2.5 GPA. So what does this cost? In the current legislation, it's budgeting $100,000 for the first year, and that's assuming 40 students receive the scholarship, which is what the schools have preliminarily estimated. It's probably going to be a lot less than that. I'm eager to work with my colleagues, the mayor, and especially the community, to ensure this program meets our community's vision and values. So this will change during the legislative process. It should reflect our community's commitment to kids, not any single person's. But just so you understand, we are blessed in this community to be able to afford this. The December 2016 report, financial report, we have an unencumbered balance of about $12.3 million. This would represent about 2 percent of that if we sent 120 kids to college. And here's the difference in our unencumbered balance if this were in place last year. We have consistently had between $10 million and $17 million left in unencumbered funds at the end of every year, and that's on top of a six-month rainy day fund and unexpected transfers completed throughout the year. We heard about some of those that are happening today. As you can see, every year since at least 2012, the amount we don't spend has come in higher than budgeted. And you can see in the CAPR, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, in the comments about our unencumbered funds, they are universally higher than budgeted. So this isn't just something that would be great because last year, we happened to have something we've never had before. We have consistently had this in our budget. And it's also helpful to remember that the vast majority of Green municipal income taxpayers are not Green residents. They're people who work in Green but live elsewhere. So, who grants the money? As with other elements of this plan, I'm opening to changing the composition and/or function of the board overseeing the distribution of the great funds. And as before, I look forward to working with my colleagues, the mayor, and the community to make this happen. So initially, in the legislation, it'd be the Great Scholarship Board. It would be made up of five members, three from the city, two from Green local schools. The board would have the authority to establish procedures to apply and grant the money how they see fit, either directly to the student or to the school, depending on which works best for the student. So, why do this? Because the overall economic benefits, the overall economic benefit is to the students and the community. Bottom line is, not going to college costs you $500,000 over your lifetime, generally. And I apologize for the smallness of this, but as you can see, the amount of taxes going to communities increases as their educational attainment increases. In addition, their poverty rate decreases the more you have, more education you receive. But that's not just true, that's also, this is also interesting to look at children who've come from first-generation households that are wealthy, like my grandfather-in-law, who built his own heating and cooling company without a college degree. Even children coming from wealthy households are affected by the education attainment levels of their parents. Those who grew up in the wealthiest quintile of families are half as likely to remain in that quintile if their parents don't have college degrees than if their parents do. If the parent has college degrees, you have a 50 percent chance of remaining in that top quintile. If they don't have a college degree, you're 25 percent chance of remaining in that quintile. And again, the poverty, the poverty rate decreases substantially regardless of family makeup, the more you have, the more educated and trained you are. And here's another interesting little fact. Every one percentage point increase in college graduates has a spillover economic impact. So, high school dropout's wages go up by 1.9 percent. High school graduates' wages go up by 1.4 percent, and even college graduate wages go up by 0.4 percent. So the spillover effect is, it actually benefits all members of the community to increase the percentage of college graduates living in it. But this is more than economics, too. The more, with a college degree, the likelihood of reporting health to be very good or excellent is 44 percent greater. The likelihood of being a regular smoker is 3-point times lower. The incidence of obesity and having drinking are significantly lower. The likelihood of exercising, having a healthy diet, wearing seat belts, and seeking preventive medical care are significantly higher. The incidence of a disability making it difficult to live independently is 3.6 times lower. Life expectancy at age 25 is seven years longer for those having at least some college compared to those never have gone to college. Reliance on expensive forms of banking and credit is significantly lower. The probability of being in prison or jail is 4-point times lower. The probability of being married is 21 percent higher, and the probability of being divorced or separated is 61 percent lower. The likelihood of being happy is significantly higher. Lifetime taxes are conservatively $273,000 greater in present discounted value. Lifetime government expenditures are about $81,000 lower in present value. The lifetime total fiscal effect is roughly $355,000 in present value. So that means if one student who receives a, who receives the Great Scholarship, follows through and lives here, they pay for one year of the Great Scholarship. Crime is significantly lower. Volunteering is 2.3 times more likely. The estimated value of volunteer labor that's provided is 4.1 times greater. Employment in the nonprofit sector is twice as likely. Annual cash donations to charities are 900 times higher, $900 higher. Total philanthropic contributions are 4.7 times higher. Voting and political involvement are significantly higher. Participation in school, community service, civic, and religious organizations is 1.9 times higher. Leadership in those organizations is particularly greater, 3.2 times. Attendance at community meetings is 2-point times greater. I don't know if we're excited about that, but that's great. And then neighborhood interactions and trust are significantly higher. But unfortunately, first-generation students are more at risk not provide these benefits to the community and themselves and their families. Here are the percentages of students enrolled immediately after high school into college. College-educated parents is over 80 percent, some colleges over 50. High school are lower, first-generation kids, 35 percent. In addition, they're disproportionately overrepresented among the most disadvantaged groups. They're more likely to delay college entry, need remedial coursework, and drop out of college, report lower educational expectations than their peers as early as eighth grade, often begin college less academically prepared than their other students, are less likely to take algebra. They're less likely to take college courses in academic areas like science, technology, engineering, and math, which we all know is the key to the 21st century economy. They tend to apply to and attend less selective colleges that are closer to home. They're more likely to work while in college and live off campus, which negatively affects their academic and social integration outcomes. They are not more likely to receive help from their schools than applying to colleges. Unless you think that, you know, all we need to do is get more manufacturing, from 1980 to 2013, workers with no college have seen a net loss of 9.3 million jobs in the manufacturing sector. During that same period, workers with at least some college saw a net increase of $2.5 million, $2.5 million manufacturing jobs. The scholarship would also make a tremendous difference. State funding for public institutions has declined since the 80s. Today, students and their families are contributing a greater share than they were during my generation. Tuition constitutes twice the share of college revenues as they did 20 years ago. And here's the percentage of this Ohio state budget that's dedicated to higher ed. Obviously, it's about half the percentage it was when I started college in 1990. Sorry, I hate to admit when I was, how old I am, but there it is. Also, tuition growth between 2003 and 2012 has also grown greatly. And community and technical colleges grew the least fast, but they were still over 40 percent. Main campuses were almost 60 percent. And as a reminder, Ohio has been particularly poor at investing in the well-trained, educated workforce employers seek. A recent study revealed that seven in 10 Ohio jobs pay so little, they would qualify a family of three for food stamps. While it's tough in Ohio, it's also tough elsewhere. Nationally, state funding has also declined. This is, the cost shift from states to local governments has contributed to an increase in student lending. The Great Scholarship would pick up significant portions of tuition even at four-year institutions, essentially paying for one full year of four-year, for four-year recipients. Again, I apologize for that being small, but it is. The scholarship would pay an even greater portion of the cost of a community college. And it would pay for an even greater percentage of the cost of a technical college like Stark Luckily, previous and current mayors and city councils have been fantastic financial stewards of our community. We now have $12.3 million in unencumbered GRF. We're talking about taking 2 percent of that so that we can ensure that as many as 100 to 120 students in Green will have opportunities for future success, create jobs, and boost our economic strength. And just to give you an idea of what this is, it's equivalent to about what we spend annually in the mayor's office, or finance department, or human resources department on salaries and benefits. It's about half of what we spend in the finance department overall. And here are some comparisons. There's the TIF fund, it's about, you know, it's about 3.2, 3.3 million. All our contracted services lines are about 1.75 million. There's, it's, and sending 120 kid, green kids to college would cost less than we spend maintaining the cab. So again, it is not a monstrous undertaking here. And just so you remember, this is what we have in unencumbered funds, and that's what this would represent. And there's the change in the unencumbered fund balance. And remember, annually, fully funded, annual fully funded cost will be paid for if just one student graduates college that otherwise wouldn't have. Impressed by our commitment, Kent, Green's innovative approach to economic development and investing in its workforce has started getting noticed and already created opportunities. Folks from Kent Stark will be here talking about those, and I'm sure other area colleges and universities will likely follow suit. And we all know that investing in kids benefits us all. Look at our home values. I looked at two streets in Chennawhat Estates. One was in Green, the other in Springfield. Both streets have similarly very nice homes, ones I kind of like. The Green homes typically were appraised at 22 percent more than the Springfield home per square foot. That's because of our schools and our community's investment again, in them. Again, though, not one dime of the Green Scholarship would go directly to the school district. It would go to, it would go directly to the kids. I've been guided by this, by our city motto as I put this together. Prosperous. There are few ways of making more, making communities more prosperous than investing in the highly skilled and educated workforce that will bring high-paying jobs to our community. Progressive. This idea would progress our, would progress our economic development portfolio beyond the status quo tax break packages that remove funding for our kids and instead invest in our kids to develop a highly skilled, educated workforce. Promising. What's more promising than investing in our future? To any potential employer looking to relocate, I say, look at Green, where we actually invest in the highly skilled, educated workforce you crave. And I look forward to working with everybody in this community to make sure this works and to make sure this meets our values and our, in our joint vision as a community. Mr. Chairman, I'm done with my portion. I would like to have the folks from Kent Stark come here and talk, and talk a little bit about what they're planning to do to match our commitment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You guys can come on up?
This is what I'm using, is that right?
Yeah, so.
Okay. I'm assuming you can hear me without any problem? All right, very good. My name is Mary Southards. I'm the Assistant Dean at Kent State Stark. I've been there for a lot of years. And we have long enjoyed a very positive relationship with Green local schools. A number of graduates from Green Local attend Kent State Stark every year, and by and large, they do very well. We have an alum sitting right up here to just give you an idea of the caliber of student that comes from Kent State Stark. I saw this idea, Mr. Dyer's proposal for the Great Scholarship, in a daily electronic news blast that comes out of the Ohio Department of Education. So, the article from the Akron Beacon Journal was picked up and featured at the state level. And my immediate reaction was to literally go as fast as I could down to the dean's office, knock on her door, and say, "I need five minutes, I need it now. We need to be a partner in this initiative." Because there isn't a better investment that you can make as a community than in the children that are you, that are in your community. Green local schools are exceptional schools, but you have this population that could do more and could go further and could contribute more to your community if you can find the way to get them over those initial hurdles. Mr. Dyer mentioned some of those, the most common hurdles for those first-gen college students. Probably the two that are the most significant are, there's no one in their family, their immediate family, that can be the advocate, that know the ropes. If you think state government is complex or local government is complex, try filling out the FAFSA if you've never seen one before, or you don't even know what FAFSA stands for. It's the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, and if you can fill out an income tax return, you can fill out the FAFSA. But to a family where no one has that experience, that is a daunting task. So just having someone in the family that can be their advocate, that can help them jump through all the various points that they have to jump to get enrolled in college is definitely one of the barriers, probably the most fundamental barrier. And the second is cost. Because there is a sense among many families, not just those of first-gen families, but many families, that a college education is simply beyond their reach. Because they're not aware of the resources that can be brought to bear at the community level, at the state level, and at the federal level to help them reach that goal. So looking at a program like the REACH Scholarship and knowing that we would be able to partner with you and your families to overcome those two barriers is something that we're very, very interested in doing. Mr. Dyer gave you, I think, a very full picture of the importance of education as an economic driver, but I have just a couple of points that I want to use to kind of fill in that picture for you. I'm going to bring it right back to the state of Ohio and then also in northeast Ohio. The state lists about 460 of the most promising jobs, career areas, in the state of Ohio that are going to be available over the next few years. 60 percent of those require some kind of post-secondary education. About 10 percent of those are available if you have no education, including a high school diploma, so not even the level of a high school diploma. And the other 30 percent of those career options are open to individuals with a high school diploma. The single most rapidly growing, the highest need career area identified in the state of Ohio is nursing. And nursing, for the most part, requires a bachelor's degree. The area of employment overall in the state of Ohio and in northeast Ohio as well that's growing the fastest is healthcare. All aspects of healthcare, physicians, physician's assistants, radiologic technology, OT, PT, and nursing. All of those requiring some form of post-secondary education, some certainly way beyond what we're focusing on here tonight, which is getting kids into college and working toward a bachelor's degree. So that just gives you a little bit more of a picture. Mr. Dyer showed you the earning potential for a student, someone who has a high school diploma and somebody has a baccalaureate degree over a 40-year working career, and many of us will be lucky if our working career is only 40 years. A million dollars more in earning potential for a student who has a back, for an individual who graduates with a baccalaureate degree than someone who ends their formal education with a high school diploma. Now, you think about what that million dollars of earning potential over a 40-year career does to the tax base of your community, and I think you start to get a very broad picture of what a highly educated workforce can do for you. Ohio doesn't do very well in higher ed for its citizens. We are down there in the lowest third in the state. I don't think that's a particularly good picture for us, and certainly isn't some, we should certainly be striving to raise that. Baccalaureate degree completion in Summit County is a little over 30 percent. That's all of Summit County. Baccalaureate degree completion in Stark County is only 21 percent. So we have a lot of way to go to reach what the governor, our governor, has identified as his goal for the state of Ohio, which is 65 percent of the workforce in Ohio having a bachelor's degree by 2025. That's a huge gap to fill in just a very short period of time. So we think your Great Scholarship idea is a way of taking a shot at that, at giving local students that help that they need to get them started, to get them past that first financial barrier. What we would like to do is partner with you. And that's why we have come up with a proposal that we're calling Great Success. And what it basically includes are a number of support services for your families, and Lisa's going to talk about some of those. But in short, it's how to plan for college, how to complete the FAFSA. You want a personalized higher education budget, how to make your resources stretch, we're going to give that to you. Lisa's going to talk about academic... Lisa's gonna talk about academic, um, assessment. We can do, um, class tours and opportu, or campus tours and opportunities for students to just sit in a college classroom, just to see if it, if it's what they think they want. And probably the best thing that we can bring to bear, uh, in this initiative is that the university, Kent State University at Stark, your campus that's 15 minutes down the road, is willing to match, um, the Great Scholarship by offering, um, an additional $1,000 to every student who is being funded by the Great Scholarship program coming out of Green. So that's something that we want to bring to the table and, and propose to you as you consider that. I want, I have one thing that I want to hand out, and then I'm going to introduce my colleague, just to give you, I think, a little bit better sense of where your money can go and what it really can buy for a student in terms of just real dollars and how much a college education costs. So with your permission, I have something that I'd like to share with you.
And Mr. Dyer, if we can, uh, maybe five more minutes?
Yeah, I think that's all it'll be.
What I'd like to share with you, if you, um, turn to this side, like the backside of, of this little handout, you're gonna, what you see across the bottom is just a, a comparison of tuition costs. So if you take a look at that, now these are annual enrollment or year-long tuition costs, and take a look at where your $2,500 a year and my $1,000 a year can go in terms of paying for a student's education. And if that student comes from a family that is grant-eligible, Pell Grant-eligible, they could conceivably go to school without a student loan. And we all know what the student loan debt looks like, um, in the United States right now. So the investment that you're talking about making is gonna go a long way toward paying for a, a student's college education. I'd like to introduce my colleague, this is Lisa Hart, she's the Director of Academic Services, and she's gonna give you just a very quick overview of the kind of support services that can be brought to bear for students who might benefit from the scholarship.
Thanks, Mary. Good evening. Um, it's nice to be here with you. We are very excited about what you're proposing, and I think the fact that the scholarship covers a whole semester at your hometown university, which research has shown is the choice of first-generation students, is, is a great thing. And I wanted just to give you a little bit of information to assure you that students aren't sacrificing anything by staying at home. There are 19 bachelor's degree programs that students can finish at the Stark campus, and then over 200 that if they wanted to transition to the Kent campus with, with our help, they certainly could do. One of the things that I think we do very well is that we are able to be responsive and creative when we see that there are issues. We do placement assessment, of course, and those are based on standardized tests, which are usually in favor of people who have the cultural knowledge about college and have parents who went to college. They tend to do better on those tests. Um, there are some biased things with them. Um, we noticed that when our math placement assessments, students weren't doing very well, would often miss a cut score by just a couple of points that would enable them to bypass remedial education and move into the course they needed for their major, and not having a context for that or understanding extra classes, extra money, that sort of thing. "Oh, I hated that test, I'll just do whatever, just put me in it." Um, we created math bootcamps. It was our first summer last year, we had 43 students participate in it, which exceeded my wildest expectations. We had a lot of students change their placements so that they started in the, in the math course that they needed for their majors instead. That's just an example of the kind of thing that we're able to do. Um, we're small enough that we get to know our students very well. We don't have any grad assistants, not that they're not great, but the students actually work with professors and get to know them, and they can certainly open doors for them, such as Professor Lisa Waite does for her communications students. So if anyone has questions, we'll stick around for a little bit. Um, really, people get a very first-class education at Kent State Stark, and the scholarship that Mr. Dyer is proposing would go halfway to paying for a year for it. Thanks.